Why are they separated?
Just be sure to tell me it's up.
How good?
Good, how are you?
Doing well.
Counsel ready? Let's see, we have two more minutes, I'm just trying to get them back. I know. You only had two minutes. Just two minutes, okay. What's that? Good evening. Let me welcome you to the regular town council meeting of Town of Sunnyvale for Monday, February 25th. I welcome each one of you. At this time, please join me in standing for the invocation to be given by Councilmember Clark.
Heavenly Father, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. You've allowed us to live in one of the greatest towns of America. We come to you today to ask for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support for this meeting. I pray for our mayor, for all levels of our town officials, and in particular, this assembled council before you. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer to you, and grow together as a community. We bless, we ask you for you to bless us and guide us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in standing as we pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to my flag. The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. All right, now time is seven o'clock. Let me call to order the regular town council meeting of Town of Sunnyvale. And the time is seven. For the record, all councilmembers are present. So we have a quorum. The first item is the public forum. So this is the time citizens may come forward and talk to the council on any items you would like other than litigation or personal matters. So if you'd like to speak to the council at this time, please come forward. No one is coming forward, so I am going to close the public forum. Council, we have, let's see. We have four items on the consent agenda. Item number one, that's the department monthly report for January 2019. Number two, discuss and consider approving relocation expenses not to exceed fifteen thousand after authorized in resolution 19-02, the employment agreement with the town manager. Number three, discuss and consider second reading of ordinance 19-05, an ordinance of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, amending chapter three of the Code of the Town of Sunnyvale, but deleting section 3.201 to 3.212, and adding new sections 3.201 to 3.213, thereby adopting the International Building Code, International Residential Code, International Mechanical Code, International Pumping Code, International Fuel Gas Code, International Energy Conservation Code, International Property Maintenance Code, International Existing Building Code, International Swimming Pool, and Spa Code 2018 additions, and the National Electric Code 2017 addition, and providing certain additions and deletions thereto, providing for a severability clause, providing for an effective date. Item number four, direct to discuss and consider approving second reading of ordinance 19-06, an ordinance of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, amending chapter five of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Sunnyvale, but deleting sections 5.101 through 5.107 in its entirety, and adding new sections 5.101 through 5.107, thereby adopting the International Fire Code 2018 addition, by providing certain amendments and deletions thereto, providing for a penalty not to exceed $2,000 for each offense, repealing any ordinance in conflict with the ordinance, providing for a severability clause, and providing an effective date. Would anyone like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion in support of agenda one through four?
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion second.
Motion made by Mr. Finch, seconded by Mr. Allen, to approve consent agenda items one through four as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Any additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed? Motion passed six zero. Going on to the discussion action items, finance. Discuss and consider approving first reading of ordinance 19-04, an ordinance of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances, Appendix Article 13.000, Public Utilities to amend section 13.400, Senior Citizen Credit to set the allowance for senior citizen discount, and providing an effective date. Ms. Hopkins? Now you're far out there, so I gotta kinda see.
Counsel, I don't know if this is working, but I prepared for you a memo that has several different options that you can consider for this senior citizen consideration. And I'll answer any questions you have. I just basically went out to communities to see what they were offering. I think that's what you directed me to do.
Liz, are there any key items you want to touch on?
Well, right now...
Just kinda run through that if you don't mind, please.
Right now, the town is offering the $5 discount, and we have two residents that have requested that since this was brought forth. So there's two that are taking advantage of that right now. That is by request. The city of Mesquite, as it says, it waives the late charges if paid before the disconnect date. That does not mean if it's disconnected, they will waive the disconnect charges. They will only waive the late fees. The same with Rockwall and Prosper. Plano, the waived deposit for new residents over the age of 65. The city of Frisco gives a $2 discount on trash. The city of Lancaster has a separate rate tier structure for over 65. And overall, there's approximately an $8 per month savings for those over in 65 residents. The city of Sigaville gives 10% off sewer charge and $2 off trash. The city of Allen gives a 20% reduction for trash services only. And our trash bills are about $11, so you can do the math on how much that would be. The city of Allen gives a 20% reduction for trash services only. The city of Fornie has a different rate structure, and they also have a separate $16 sewer service charge, which is above and beyond their water and their trash and their sewer.
That's for capital improvement projects, right?
Correct. And then after that, I went down and I did each of those options, what the fiscal impact for the town would be. Number one would be $31,800. Number two through four would reduce revenue by $3,900. Number five has no fiscal impact because the deposit is refundable anyway. Number six would reduce revenue by $12,720. Number seven, reduce revenue by $51,000. Number eight would reduce revenue by $55,000. Number nine would reduce revenue by $18,500. And number 10 is really not comparable. Their rate structure is very different, and they do charge that CIP $16, so I wouldn't compare us to that. We did prepare an ordinance in case you were prepared to take action tonight so that you could have a first reading, but we need to look at the ordinance and make sure that whatever consideration you give is properly worded. Right now, it has the $5 in it. $10, excuse me.
Counsel, question for staff.
Liz, thanks for the research that you did. Did you talk with our water and wastewater rate study consultant and ask him how this would impact what our future opportunity was, how much it would push things off?
I did not. I did not bring the rate study with me, but basically, you're going to reduce your CIP by whatever financial impact either one of or all of these have.
Mayor, I'm gonna make the same comment I made before. We just went through a water and wastewater rate study. I'm not against helping out seniors when they need it, but this should have been brought up then. I'm all for that. I will not take it, at least not until I'm off this council. I will not take advantage of it, even though I'm one or two people on this council that could. I won't vote for it, I'll tell you that right now, until I see supporting documentation that justifies and shows me what the impact is gonna be in the future. And that's my five seconds worth.
Mr. Clark?
So I stepped out for a second. How many people currently take the $5 discount?
We have two.
Two people? Okay. And, you know, thank you for putting all the research together, looking at what other municipalities have done. Do we have any type of program, benevolent program, to help people in need? Is there anything like that, that towns have put together? An emergency fund for people going through emergencies for, you know?
We do not have an official hardship. We certainly can grant one under certain conditions, whether it's a tornado strikes or something like that. It's on a case-by-case basis, and it's done at the management level. We don't have anything right now. We do provide payment plans if people get behind. Some of the cities that I talked to and researched, maybe one or two of them had that type of program. And it was basically to put together a fund to help those that were having trouble paying their water bills.
But I know at least instances where, at least I had two or three experiences where somebody forgot to pay the payment. I think staff works really well with the resident, not to punish them. In other words, they forgive the disconnection fee and such things. Rayceley, Leslie?
Usually only if they're willing to sign up for automatic draft, but we do on certain cases.
Got it. So we try to help them out. Anything else, Mr. Clark?
Was this open?
We'll come there, but I want to finish the staff first, the council first. Anyone else have any questions or discussions on this topic? I'm sorry?
Was there a question about a public hearing?
Yeah, this is not a public hearing, but I'm going to take the comments. So Finch, you have anything, or you don't have any?
So, thinking a lot about this discount. I think it's, I think on the surface, it sounds like a good idea, and it seems that we are being benevolent in a way, but there are, there's basically no criteria to get it, other than age, not whether you need it, not whether you use 5,000 gallons a month or 10,000 gallons a month. And so there's no benchmark to say, there's no, there's no, there's no bar you have to cross before we give it. So it's not, it's not saying that the person actually needs the discount. And I agree with what Councilman Egan's statements about us not including in the CIP, in our long-term project, while the dollars are minimum, we didn't conclude it. And so, while I don't like the $5, because I don't think it's necessary, I do, I will not support the 10. And one question I had for staff, have we received, to your knowledge in the past, have we received any resident come to us and say that, "I'm having a hard time paying my bill, I need a discount," or "I can't"? Do we, do we receive these kind of requests often?
It does happen. Normally, it's because they've had a leak, and the leak went undetected for a period of time, and their bill got really, really high. Those are my recollections. I can certainly go back and look. As I said in the monthly report, we're trying to call our residents ahead of time, let them know this connection is coming, and try to get them in here so those late fees and things like that don't just start snowballing on them.
And in those cases, we, we, yeah, what do we do? Do we, do we give some grace or mercy on that? Or what do we do in those situations where if they've had a slab leak, you know, a $2,000 bill?
Well, what we normally do is give them one leak adjustment every 12 months, and we can make a payment plan for them. And we try to do that based on, you know, the timeframe and the ability to pay. We don't like to, you know, run it out long through the time. Again, if you have a major leak, it goes on for a month, six weeks, it can be, you know, a large water bill.
So there is some criteria we put, we put some judgment to this to decide whether, what our next action is. We're not just saying, "Oh, you must," or "Here's the bill." We do apply some, some kind of mercy to what they're saying, some way. We try to.
You know, with the proper, you know, support to that.
Right.
When you're dealing with a public utility, you have to be very careful
Understand.
that you're fair across the board, and, you know...
Right. We have no rubric or anything that tells us, that gives us any kind of guidance on that at this point, right? I mean, we have no system that tells us whether we give them $5, or whether we give them grace on anything. We just, basically, case-by-case basis at this point, except for the $5 ordinance, I understand that. But on those kind of things, we just, it's case-by-case basis.
I believe it's definitely practice.
Okay.
And we are consistent with that practice.
Okay.
And we do have a set formula for leak adjustments and how we handle those.
Awesome, okay. Well, thank you for that. And I tend to agree with Councilman Clark on, you know, if we find that there are some issues that we, I mean, the idea is to be benevolent if we can. It is a public utility, so I agree with Liz, that we have to be careful with how we use public funds in those ways, because it is an expense back to the town. We are paying for something. It's not like we get it for free and then we have to give a discount for free. And so I think we have to be careful with that as well. So it is a sensitive topic, can be, and I wanna say that I've thought a lot about it, but I just believe that increasing the rate is not really an effective way to deal with the issue.
Liz, I have a question for you with regards to the benevolence that Ryan was speaking to. Is that for everybody in the town, or is that predominantly focused at 65 and older, or a specific age and older group?
The study or the leak adjustment?
I think the whole topic, when we were talking about benevolence, the leak adjustments, the grace and mercy, is that a focused energy on our senior citizens that are 65 and older? Or is that a focused attempt on everybody in the town?
That would apply to everyone in the town.
Mayor, I just wanna make one last comment. We're not taking away the $5 opportunity that currently exists and has existed for close to 30 years. This is only about increasing the opportunity and other $5. But in any case of either amount, and I stand totally behind the $5. I'm not, I'm not saying that I wanna pull the current $5 credit that could be taken, which is now being taken by two people. I'm not talking about pulling that away. Even that money was not taken into consideration in the wastewater rate study, water and wastewater rate study. So until we, until we do that, the $5 is available for those who want to sign up. It's just the additional $5 is, I think, more the focus of what this new ordinance would be if we were to approve it. And again, it needs to be fully supported in the budget, even though it's a very minor amount. It still needs to be, in my opinion, it needs to be supported in the budget, because that's what we were elected to do, is to steward, be stewards of the town's money. That's my next five seconds worth.
Yeah, Mr. Clark? Yes, sir?
Right. So going back on what I was asking about earlier, a benevolent fund. You know, I think we should try to help those people in need if we can, so maybe look at an option to have an emergency fund, some type of fund to help people out. Again, I don't know if that's done. It sounds like we may need to do some research, but maybe instead of, you know, increasing the $5, $10, I mean, I don't know how much a $5 off a water bill will affect, or actually, what, I don't know if that's gonna be a big help to people. If somebody is in a financial crisis, you know, maybe there could be some type of benevolent funds that we can tap into or something, you know? So I'd like to maybe have that followed up on. Obviously, even depending on however this goes, still maybe look in that, because that may be a good resource for somebody that's going through some hardships.
So Susan, this is the first reading, right? So this one needs to come back second time? Is that the rule?
Mayor, you can, you can vote on it now if you feel that it's gonna, and that will get an indication if it needs to be brought back. Because if you vote it down, then it would not be brought back for a second reading.
Okay. I'm gonna do, I wanna take some public inputs. I know this is not a public hearing item, but I still want to take some public inputs. If anyone would like to come and speak to the council on this topic, please come forward at this time. No one is coming forward. So counsel, is there a, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna ask for a motion on this item. That's the agenda item number five. Discuss and consider approving the first ordinance of ordinance 19-04, an ordinance of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances, Appendix Article 13.000, Public Utilities, to amend section 13.400, Senior Citizen Credit to set the allowances, allowance for senior citizen discount, and providing an effective date. Is there a motion on this one?
Harrison, I'm the one who brought this forward upon discussions with several citizens. Has helped to offset their increased water rates, even though it was an insignificant amount. It was something that was enacted by the town 30 years ago, has not been advertised. That's why nobody takes advantage of it. And again, it was done in the spirit of trying to find a, a way to offset some of the increased cost for those senior citizens that we have in our town. But since the overwhelming majority of this council is opposed to it, I move that it be withdrawn.
Motion made by Mr. Wade to withdraw the ordinance 19-04. Is there a second?
Sir?
Motion made by Mr. Wade to withdraw ordinance 19-04, second by Mr. Egan. Everyone in favor of the motion signify? Motion passed six zero. Moving on to item number six, direct to discuss and consider adopting two, appointing two members of the town council to serve as the audit subcommittee. Liz?
Counsel, excuse me. Every year, we have at least two council members that meet with the auditor prior to the presentation to the council. And so, two of you need to volunteer.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to volunteer Kevin Clark. Are we gonna nominate him, or are we gonna volunteer him?
Are there any volunteers? Mr. Clark is one name I heard. Everybody's looking at the far end of the table for volunteer.
There are not too many people down at the far end of the table.
Yes. Would you be willing to? Okay. Liz, can you work with these two? Yes, I think, thanks to volunteers, we are going to appoint Mr. Clark and Mr. Wade. We don't need a motion on that, right? Do we? Okay, can I have a motion to appoint Mr. Clark and Mr. Wade to serve as these audit subcommittee members?
Ten second.
Motion made by Mr. Egan, second by Ms. Allen, to appoint Mr. Jim Wade and Mr. Kevin Clark to serve as the town council members, to serve on the audit subcommittee. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor signify? All opposed, motion six zero. Just come to you if you oppose it. Moving on to the town secretary portion of the agenda. To discuss and consider approving first reading of ordinance 19-09, an ordinance declared unopposed candidates in the May for 2019. General election, elected to office, canceling the election, providing for a severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Wade, Ramsey?
Mayor and council, state law provides that a general or special election may be canceled if the candidate for the office that appears on the ballot is unopposed. For the 2019 election, Mayor, Place One and Place Two, all only had one person file for the office. As such, the town council may cancel the election that was previously ordered to be held. As such, the town council may cancel the election that was previously ordered to be held in May of this year. Um, however, the funds that were budgeted for this election will still be used for the special proposition election and the special election to fill a vacancy.
Council, any questions for the secretary? So same rules apply here, Susan? Take a motion for this one? Okay. Can I have a motion with respect to resolution 19-07?
You still want to take a motion to move it to the second reading?
Right, because then that allows it to go to the consent if they so desire.
Okay.
Motion made by Mr. Mr. Egan to approve resolution 19-07 as presented. Is there a second?
We're not on resolution 1907. We're on ordinance 1909.
Thank you very much, resolution 19, uh, 1909 as presented.
So to move it to the second reading?
Let me take it back, let me read it one more time, thank you. There's a motion to approve ordinance 19-09, motion made by Mr. Egan, is there a second?
Mayor, to save Councilman Clark and Councilman Finch from having to make a motion on this, I'll, I'll make that motion for them.
Thanks for the clarification. Motion made by Mr. Egan, second by Allen to approve ordinance 19-09 as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Any additional discussions? All in favor signify? All opposed, motion passed 6-0. Moving on to number eight. Discuss and consider approving resolution 19-07, a resolution of the town council of the town of Sanibel, Texas, authorizing the execution of a joint election contract for election services with the Dallas County Elections Department. Ramsey?
Mayor and council, each year the town contracts with Dallas County Elections Department to conduct the general election for the town council and for the special election. The attached contract provides for the conducting of the town's general election and special elections that will be held on Saturday, May 4th, any runoff election that may be necessary. Dallas County will conduct the election in accordance with the attached contract and election judge information for the town is included. Uh, that estimated cost is $6,569.08.
Council, any questions for Ms. Ramsey?
Mayor, I do have one question.
Yes, sir?
Since this will be a joint election with our school, is this cost separate from what the school is paying? So it's a separate?
So it's divided out for every entity that contracts with Dallas County. They take that total amount and they divide it out from all the entities.
Thank you.
Additional questions or discussions on this topic? If not, can I have a motion with respect to resolution 19-07? Motion made by Mr. Egan.
Second.
And second by Mr. Finch to approve resolution 19-07 as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Additional discussions? All in favor signify? All opposed, motion passed 6-0. Moving on to the assistant town manager portion of the agenda, that is item number nine. To discuss and consider appointing members to serve on the capital improvement plan, CIP Citizens Committee. Ms. Black?
Mayor and council, as you know, we've been working on a process to identify needed projects for our capital improvement plan. And the February 11th town council meeting, you all approved a methodology to help staff rank those projects. Would come back to you today to ask that you appoint a citizens committee to work with staff to develop our plan for future and current capital needs. Um, as of today, we have received nine applications, which include applications from Cindy Bernowski, Teresa Bruiser, Anthony Farmer, Don Griffin, Andrew Harper, Lyndon James, Chris Lawless, Todd Ranta, and LeAnn Williams. I will note that Mr. Frank Weeks withdrew his application today as he had some other commitments come up and he felt he couldn't serve on this committee. Frank Weeks? Frank Weeks?
Okay.
Other than that, staff is happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Black, let me ask you, another, the council's staff's recommendation is to appoint seven. What if you got more?
Certainly at your discretion.
With respect to staff, I want to ask your opinion. Council, uh, recommendations, thoughts? So we got Cindy Bernowski, Teresa Bruiser, Anthony Farmer, three, Don Griffin, four, Andrew Harper, five, Lyndon James, six, Chris Lawless, seven, Todd Ranta, eight, and LeAnn Williams, nine.
Mayor, do we have another name that was, uh, that was supposed to have been submitted that maybe we have lost contact with somehow?
Um, yes, Mr. Doug Williams' name, um, was talked. Uh, I did speak with Doug, I know at some point of time, he was interested, I was willing, but again, you know, he got a million things going in his plate, so I, again, I, I haven't heard back, we haven't heard back from him, so I don't know whether, uh, he's still interested or not.
So I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, that he is interested and willing to serve. He just did not get his application in, so.
Okay. So if you include Mr. Williams, there'll be nine, 10. Let me ask you from the, what are your thoughts, council?
Mayor, I think there's nine people here, uh, plus, uh, Mr. Williams, who I, I think is very valuable to our town, uh, and to the knowledge of what's going on in our town. It's got a good feel of the pulse, along with, uh, Councilman Wade and Clark. It's my opinion, unless there's somebody on here that the council wants to strike arbitrarily for some reason, and some of these names I don't know, uh, then I would, I would suggest that we take all of these names as this is a big, important, uh, a big project rather, and it's important to the town. And I've seen no reason why we need to restrict it to five or six or seven. That's my input and I'm going to go on with the rest of the council. But I certainly, uh, support, uh, Mr. Williams. I think his reputation and his, uh, resume, even though it's not here, speaks well for our town and he would be a great asset to be a part of this community since he is doing these things routinely with our schools.
Does it have to be an even number or odd number or does it really make a difference? This is more of an advisory committee, right? Okay. So if you include everybody in this list, plus Mr. Williams, there'll be 10. Does anyone from the council wants to be part of this committee?
I think Councilman Clark should be a member of this committee.
So you really like him today, don't you?
Well, thank you.
Is that, Mr. Clark?
Yes, no, I'd like to be a member of this committee. That sounds great.
That's, that's 11, anyone else?
Right, it'd be nice, may I have two?
I'm happy to volunteer.
That's 12, anyone else? I think that's a good number, right? Would you agree?
Yes, sir.
If that's the case, if you're good with it, um, I'm going to call out the name one more time. And, um, I'm going to start with, uh, Councilmember Ryan Finch, Councilmember Kevin Clark, Cindy Bernowski, Teresa Bruiser, Anthony M. Farmer, Don Griffin, Andrew Harper, Lyndon James, Chris Lawless, Todd Ranta, LeAnn Williams, and Doug Williams. Did I get all the names right? Again, I want the staff to have put together a really nice package describing what this committee is all about and the committee member's scope and the, uh, and the ganja. Leslie and the rest of the staff, thank you very much for that one. Council, can I have a motion to appoint the above 12 members, uh, to the capital improvement plan citizens committee?
Motion to appoint the 12 people to the CIP committee?
Motion made by Mr. Clark to appoint the above 12 as members of the CIP citizens committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Allen to appoint the 12 mentioned above as members to serve on the capital improvement citizens committee. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor signify? All opposed, motion passed, um, 6-0. Leslie asked for seven, we gave you 12. We are nice, I listen.
Mr. Mayor, I have a random comment or question for, uh, for you, maybe even the staff, maybe Mr. Wade and Egan as well. Does it seem like we're having more people volunteering in our town than what we've had in the past? Or is this the same amount of numbers that we've had in the past?
I'm asking, you're asking Mr. Wade and Mr. Egan because they've been on the council for a while, right?
I guess I'm asking all three of them, I'm just curious. It seems like we're having more people volunteer for some of these committees than what we've had in the past. Maybe not, I'm just curious, are we, are we getting more volunteers?
In a way we are. I was talking with somebody earlier today. We probably have 3,000 people in the town that are of voting age or of wherewithal, this is just my opinion, of wherewithal about things and really and truly only about, at least with regard to the town. You guys are closer to the school, but with regard to the town, there's about 50 people. And it's a small loop. I think it's growing a little bit. I think it's through the efforts of this council, uh, that it's doing that. And I think that, that, that's a good thing. I can't answer and speak to why previous councils kept things kind of closed down. But, uh, with regard to moving forward, I think that, uh, the coming years are going to be much better for this town. If we keep taking the road and the path that we're taking today.
Any comment, Mr. Wade? I remember Cindy used to be very active for a long time, so she, she has not been. Teresa I sort of kind of knew, at least in this level. Anthony, I think we got some new, new members. It's a mix of regular members and, uh, new members, I think it's good, it's all good. Andrew Harper, I don't, I don't recognize him either, but, uh, it's all good, anyway, whoever is volunteered, we want to say thank you so much because it's your town. Whatever decisions we make, everyone is going to kind of live with it. So I appreciate everyone who stepped up and volunteered, uh, to serve in different committees. Moving on to the last item on the agenda. Mayor and council request for future staff updates and agenda items. Council, any, any items for future updates or future, uh, agenda or staff updates?
I don't know how we could have any questions when we get a list like this, so Susan, thank you. Love this, love this document here, so thank you.
Okay, if not, now time is 7:37. I'm going to adjourn the regular town council meeting of town of Sanibel for Monday, February 25th. Want to thank each one of the staff who worked really hard to put this together. Looks simple, but I know it's a lot of work behind it. And we, we, uh, we tried a new agenda process. I thought it worked really well, really good input, thank you very much. And I also want to thank all the members and the residents who came and participated in this process. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody.